Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Morning.
All right. Okay, this one sounds good. Okay, so the first, uh, business is approving the minutes for January eighteenth, January twenty-third, February sixth, and February thirteenth.
He skipped the thirtieth for a reason.
Okay. Same?
Bishop Claybill?
Yes.
Bishop O'Neal?
Yes.
Bishop Spillay?
Aye.
Okay, and then Commissioner's Office requesting the Board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting of January thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Second?
Bishop Claybill?
Yep.
Bishop O'Neal?
Yes.
Bishop Spillay?
I'm staying. Okay.
He was in here. When I put your stuff in front of him.
You and the prosecutor's hearing on...
He's before, he's after the financials.
Oh, okay.
He's on there.
Okay. Okay. So, I'm gonna report on financials from February twenty-second, which was Resolution eighteen oh twenty-eight, as you've authorized me.
I love sticking it out, so if you sign it, just put it like...
This was actually, this was actually an afternoon financial, after the financials you guys approved the last Thursday morning. The EDP needed an approval to purchase a Sequel server license for ten thousand dollars. So, we were up against a deadline, so I approved that on your behalf. Okay? And then, number seven, I'm reporting on the items I approved on February twenty-sixth, as you, as was authorized by you. For the county home, I accepted the resignation of Sarah Knife, part-time attendant, number fifteen oh four dash one, to be effective February twenty-eighth. I accepted the resignation of Gary Keys, part-time attendant, number fifteen oh four dash one, to be effective February twenty-first, two thousand eighteen. Grand permission advertised for two positions for part-time attendance for the county home, which is job number fifteen oh four dash one. These positions will remain posted until filled, until filled. For transit, I approved hiring Brian Rowe, the position of part-time transit driver, number twenty-two ten dash one, to be effective March fifth, two thousand eighteen, at rate of thirteen dollars ninety-seven cents per hour, and one-year probationary period. This offer of employment is continued upon successful completion of required pre-employment conditions. And finally, on your behalf, I concur with the Montville Township trustees in not requesting a hearing on a liquor license requested by Plank Road Tavern LLC, Unit One, and Basement and Patio, located at one six four three one G R Highway, Montville, Ohio, permit number C, P R F O six nine two seven eight four. Okay?
Good morning again.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Rather small financial session for today, since the last one was just on Thursday. So, um, in the financials today, we have a supplemental from the engineer's office for their McCarland Ridge Stormwater Fund utilizing all the remaining unappropriated balance. Also, in the encumbrances, there's an increase from the Commissioner's Office for the Walter and Haberfield LLP. And among the vouchers is seventeen thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars and six cents from JFS to Metzenbaum for the Help Me Grow Grant for January.
Okay?
Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute Resolution Number eighteen dash twenty-nine, utilizing the financials for the meeting of February twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen.
Second?
Bishop Claybill?
Yep.
Bishop O'Neal?
Yes.
Bishop Spillay?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good.
Good morning.
That's Jameson.
Okay.
So, I don't have a lot of information to give you regarding this issue, but it's for the application for appointment of counsel to assist me. The, uh, I received a couple judgment entries last week on Thursday on two different juvenile delinquency cases, removing the prosecutor's office as the prosecutor under the delinquency cases, and appointing a court-appointed attorney to prosecute them. I don't have any other information other than that. There's no explanation, no hearing, no reasoning given. It was, the entries are attached to the application with the court that I submitted for you. So, you know, I've reviewed the law regarding this matter, but I believe the law is very clear that even the juvenile case, the only person who can prosecute matters of the kind of prosecutor, not somebody handpicked by the court. So, you know, I can't sit by and allow this to happen. I mean, I think it's an abuse of taxpayer funds. You know, we pay the prosecutor's office to prosecute cases, now the court's gonna start picking lawyers to, you know, prosecute cases. So...
Yeah, this is over the top, seems like, yeah.
So, yeah, I've got, unfortunately, I've gotta hire a lawyer to assist me in dealing with it, so...
And there was no explanation for this?
No. The only explanation I have is what's attached to the, to the application, or those judgment entries, so...
Have you, have you ever heard anything like this before?
No.
No?
No. There's, there's no, I've, we've performed exhaustive legal research, there are no cases on it because it's never happened.
Hmm. Okay.
As far as I can tell. So, I'm sorry, just wasting more money, but I, there's nothing else, I, I don't know what else I can do. I mean, I can't, you know, either pay money now, or just, you know, pay money, you have the point, lawyers do the work.
Right.
What would you pay him?
And because of your conflict of interest with the juvenile court, you can't do it yourself, you have to, we have to bring in another attorney?
No, I could do it, I can do it myself. I mean, we'll assist him significantly. Um, you know, I've already had, you know, lawyers in my office prepare a lot of legal research, and I've done a lot myself. So, we'll assist him, but, you know, there's the old saying, a lawyer who has himself for a client, you know, represents himself as a fool for a client. So, um, it's never good to be, you know, I at least need somebody representing us in court, although we'll try to keep the cost down by doing a lot of legal work. We've done a lot of legal work ourselves already, so, we probably have, in my office, we probably have at least twenty hours into it already, it's not hard.
What a shame.
Yeah, it's very unfortunate, so...
Yeah, this is kind of crazy, it's just, it's, I, I just don't get it, it's five years that, been here, you just can see it more and more goofiness. It's just...
Yeah, and it's unfortunate, I mean, the, um, you know, this will delay the proceedings, I think just one of these has to sign. So, the, this will delay the proceedings. I know in the one case, the one case is a felony drug, I mean, a felony gun case, and the victims in that case are juveniles, and their parents are very upset.
The victims are juveniles?
Yes, yeah, and the perpetrators are juvenile. So, but they're, the victims' parents are, are, you know, we've heard an earful from them, and I don't know what to say other than, you know, I'm sorry, I, this came out of the blue, you know, but they don't want it delayed anymore. You know, and obviously, it's a serious matter, so, the one. They're completely unrelated cases, too. I, there's no rhyme or reason to me, the two different cases. One's a felony delinquency, the other one's an unruly.
Hmm.
So, brought like a child runaway type case. So, I, I don't know, they're just completely different matters.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
The Prosecutor's Office is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the amended application for appointment of counsel for assistance with pending issue in the juvenile court.
Second?
Bishop Claybill?
Yep.
Bishop O'Neal?
Yes.
Bishop Spillay?
One of these days, I'll come up with the good ones. Talk about something enjoyable. Sorry? Yeah. Can attorneys do that?
Leave one, okay. You just want the final one?
Yeah. But if you could just sign it finally, that would be great.
Finally, I don't want, thank you so much.
Okay, have a good day.
Thanks.
Done.
Good morning all.
Morning. How are you?
Good.
Good, good, good.
Hopefully, I can bring a little tidbits.
Yeah.
March is DD Awareness Month, and we come and ask your permission to declare March DD Awareness Month. We brought some folks with us.
Great.
Would like to take out ten, take some photos as well.
Absolutely.
Question?
For sure.
So, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute Resolution Number eighteen dash thirty, recommended in March two thousand eighteen, for developmental disabilities awareness.
Second?
Bishop Claybill?
Yes.
Bishop O'Neal?
Yes.
Bishop Spillay?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rearrange here, if you don't mind, take us photos with us.
Let me move you up here, Kristen, how's that?
My name is Teresa.
Nice to meet you, Teresa, how are you?
This is Kristen, this is Teresa.
This is Joanne.
Hi.
Marilyn.
Good morning.
Hello.
You wanna come over here, Joanne?
Good morning, good morning. How are you?
Right up here. Come here. Joanne, how do you work?
It's okay, Joanne.
Joanne, let me get your picture taken. Get a little closer to Teresa. Marilyn, wanna get a little, walk a little closer to Teresa.
Let's move you forward, Kristen.
There you go.
Will you guys wanna hold on to this here a little bit?
Will you hold that there, Teresa?
There you go.
Do you wanna get a little closer?
Come on over here, a little closer.
Walk a little closer.
There you go.
All right, there's gonna be two flashes.
No, I'm good, not me.
One, two, three, Kristen Brown, Kristen Brown, over here, Kristen Brown.
Hey, Kristen.
All right, now do one more, Marilyn. One, two, three, Kristen Brown over here.
Hey, Kristen.
Over there.
Very good.
Very good, thank you so much.
Thank you. Very good. Good job, good job. Thank you, Don.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your...
Super generous.
Yep.
Ready? Are you ready? Let's take you out to the... Let me get to the right side, or you wanna do it?
You can do it. You wanna follow up?
I'm right here, Rick.
Different from the one you sent me?
Yeah, it happens. Garrett, that's a kind of...
I mean, I was just gonna take a look, because I can do my, my stuff.
She needs the twenty-seven to the weeks.
Ready to talk, Eric? Well?
Yeah, but they're, it gets harder, I look the guy up, he's like, no. We could only put you guys on our...
Like, I thought people were taking from the...
It was dead, it was pretty good this morning.
Like, they're just looking to fill the grade at the time, you know? Yeah. You know, I'd like, I'd like to, that's why I told you, so take, you may do something.
When we get to the end, we need a good... It's the top one, so the copy...
All right.
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good morning. Today, we are presenting three of our county road projects for final approval, resolution to order, and authorization to bid. They include a section P of Auburn Road and C of Thwing Road, which connect to one another and form two legs of the triangle there with Wilson Mills. That will be resurfaced over the summer, as well as three sections of County Highway forty-six, which is Jug Street down Detroit Township, and our pavement marking, our annual pavement marking plan, that will include eighty-five miles of roads to be restriped, the yellow and white line. We try to do about a third of the county every year, keep the lines clear and visible in most weather conditions.
Do we have our own equipment for that?
No, that's contracted.
Okay, okay.
We do have equipment that can do small repair type, but their equipment is large, truck-mounted.
Industrial, yeah.
Giant vats of paint, and they actually put...
So, it'd be cheaper to, cheaper to contract it out?
Yeah. It's a hundred and eighty thousand dollar contract value, so we wouldn't really be able to do that in-house anyway.
Okay.
So, altogether, about four point eight miles of road to be resurfaced, and eighty-five miles of road to be striped in these three projects.
Okay. Yeah, altogether?
The county engineer's office is requesting the Board approve and execute Resolution Number eighteen dash thirty-one to order the improvement of Auburn Road CH four, Section B, Appleby Road CH twenty-seven, Section C, and Sharden in Metzen Township. This resolution request the Board approve and execute the title sheet for specifications for the same. Further, this resolution sets a bid opening on Wednesday, March twenty-first, two thousand eighteen, at two o'clock P M. Notice of this bid opening will be advertised on March first, two thousand eighteen, and on the county website. The county engineer's office is requesting the Board approve and execute Resolution Number eighteen dash thirty-two to order the improvement of Jug Street CH forty-six, Sections A through B, and Grove Road CH forty-six, Section Z, and Troy Township. This resolution request the Board approve and execute the title sheet for the specifications for the same. Further, this resolution sets a bid opening on Wednesday, March twenty-first, two thousand eighteen, at two oh five P M. Notice of this bid opening will be advertised on March first, two thousand eighteen, and on the county website. The county engineer's office is requesting the Board approve and execute Resolution Number eighteen dash thirty-three to order the improvement of various sections of county road by applying pavement markings for the year two thousand eighteen. This resolution request the Board approve and execute the title sheet for the specifications for the same. And further, this resolution sets a bid opening on Wednesday, March twenty-first, two thousand eighteen, at two ten P M. Notice of this bid opening will be advertised on March first, two thousand eighteen, and on the county website.
Second?
Sorry, Bishop Claybill?
Yes.
Bishop O'Neal?
Yes.
Bishop Spillay?
I know that concludes my business today, I just wanted to put a couple pieces of information on top of the, the Auburn Road section is receiving a hundred thousand dollar grant from Ohio Public Works, so that project will be supplemented through the Ohio Public Works program. In addition, a portion of Thwing is in the city of Sharden, and we have a memorandum that will be coming before the commissioners within the next two weeks for reimbursement. We will, we provided our engineering services, and construction services will be provided at no charge to the city, but they will reimburse the county for the actual materials used to resurface their piece of that project. So, we do work with other municipalities and other neighbors, and when they're responsible for a portion of the work, then they'll, they chip in, so we try to work together, but not use the county funds outside of our jurisdiction.
And I'm gonna chime in a little bit related to the county engineer. I was mentioning to you before the meeting that I went out and met with some Amish folks out in, actually, it was Mesopotamia, but they were folks from Jogger County, because they were wanting to talk about the safety project, and Newcombe Road, and some of the issues they've got with safety and stuff, and so on. Do me a favor and thank Nick for me, he provided me information on the safety study, highlighted some of the activity that's going on out there, and it helped as I was talking to them. There's certainly some challenges, Ralph had mentioned this last week, might help for us to get together with some folks. You know, we don't have a role in the roads, it's not, it's the county engineer's responsibility, but we certainly have citizens who have concerns, and they bring it up to us, and I really appreciate the county engineer for, for doing a little extra work and helping me to bear, and go in and have that conversation, so.
Sure.
It was helpful last night, so, we'll, we'll be having more talks about that, you and I can catch up on that.
Sounds good.
And I have a hundred dollars, I'm gonna do a feasibility study on a Hyperloop for Jogger County, and I think a hundred dollars will probably cover it, so...
I'll set that, I'll set up that trust fund, and you can contribute to it. So, thank you, gentlemen.
I hear you, you skydive?
Yes, I do.
Jump out perfectly near an airplane. You do skydiving, you did?
I do.
Really? That was one of the fun facts, it was announced at the leadership thing.
Actually, did this weekend.
I always thought you were a little crazy, now I know, but it's confirmation.
And he's a ski instructor, too, did he tell you that?
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
So, he's transports to his feet and slides down.
Wow, because...
That's impressive.
My little kids...
How long have you been skydiving?
For twenty years.
Really?
Wow.
That's, that's interesting, I've never been able to get myself, I think I would have a heart attack if I left it, with the airplane gun.
It's fun.
Did you, did that deserve or something? No, you just did it on your own?
Just for...
Did you ever jump out of a plane on skis onto a mountain?
I'm working on that.
That would be cool.
Yeah. Put your, use your GoPro camera on that, maybe it'll...
Live stream it, so that...
Yes.
In case it doesn't go right, you still get to enjoy it?
Wait, are you, are you in the county health truck? They have those guys that jump out airplanes now with a wing on their back.
Right.
And I've watched some YouTube's on that, that's crazy. It's awesome.
Thank you. One more?
They're still working on one, too.
Okay.
Kelly, if you want to get this while they're signing this stuff up? Morning.
Good morning. Okay, today I'm here with the, the housekeeping with the last project, would be of seventeen, be of eighteen, the county home. We will, we will be repairing the porch and the ceiling and the porch that has previous water damage done to it. This is just stating that we will not be violating anything with OHPO, and it will not harm the environment, and guests may be released at once we can begin the process.
The Department of Development is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the House Department of Development Services Agency certification of determination of self-toll exemption for a categorical exclusion project in regards to the Jogger County Pleasant Hill Home Project under grant BF seventeen eighteen one eighty-one.
Second?
Bishop Claybill?
Yes.
Bishop O'Neal?
Yes.
Bishop Spillay?
Aye.
Thank you.
Set the bell, right? Oh, good. Speaking of the Amish. Speaking of the Amish. Morning.
Morning, Abraham.
Gwen Miller? Did you forget something this morning? I think you were supposed to...
I'm gonna make a note for myself.
It's gonna be long, but then...
No.
I can't take it long.
I think we should put a no beards policy in place.
Hey, thank you.
A no beards policy?
Yeah. Over certain, like, over an inch.
You're just jealous you can't go in.
Yeah, I know. I would look like, I'd get a little spot here and there. I like the color, though.
Anyways. Going through this janitor cleaning and everything, so, you know, the price is gonna be higher. I'm not gonna sit here and say, no, it's not, it is, but, um, this weekend, we sent two guys in just to vacuum the whole area. I, I wanted to get a timer of everything, five and a half hours. That's the two guys, just to vacuum everything. So, I wanted to do it in-house, and see where we stand with contractors doing it and us doing it, so, then, everything they vacuumed, they did a really good job this weekend, so... But the big thing here is, is our security, so, we just can't have somebody, a contractor, bringing somebody in that we don't know. Granted, we took it, we acted real fast on it, I think, and, and got rid of the contractor just because of it. It's all this, all the time that we spend in going through and everything, you know, we're looking at approximately, we spent about seventy thousand dollars on these two contracts, and then we're looking at probably in between a hundred and a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to hide the three people that are in there and start cleaning them and doing it properly. This has been a major problem since I've been here cleaning, 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 so, I don't know where to go. Looking at everything, I, I think this is our best option, talking to other elected officials, they, they feel more comfortable if it goes in-house, they know who's gonna build it. They trust even our maintenance guys. Once you start bringing in the people, and they start wondering, hey, what's going on? Especially through the court prosecutors and everything, so we're always working.
And this, this comes out of your budget, why? I mean, the painting, I mean, wouldn't that be, is it, I mean...
Well, we're building some grounds.
Yeah, I get it.
So, buildings, we take care of, you know, all the maintenance.
But this sounds like a specialized situation, where they need certain, you know, requirements out of that contractor, right? You know, as far as, the security's the problem they're having.
Yeah, the security's the biggest thing.
Yeah.
We need to make sure, and we need to protect our other elected officials, you know, even the jail. So, that would become such a cluster. We don't have the personnel in the jail to come out and clean anymore, the caliber, so, a lot of things have changed. It hurts to go this route, but...
So, so there's three, three employees you're proposing?
Yes. Two, two employees, two janitors, along with our other two, and then a lead. One person would be like a lead slash supervisor slash work.
So, will that keep them busy, you know, every day?
Uh, yes. We're also looking at, there's a couple other departments that are having problems also with contractors, so we're, we're already working with them, going, hey, let us get our feet wet, and then we'll come over and let's start doing that, if we can, so, we're looking at many different options.
How many people did the contractor use?
Anywhere from one to three, so... And they weren't doing the whole job. I mean, you go up there, you can ask any elected official, the job just was not getting done, especially in the wintertime. So, and then I was taking another phone call, so, Richard.
So, is, is this gonna be a flex team, or it's always three people? So, you were talking about one to three people, sometimes the work effort may require one or two, and so if you got a lead that you're paying for, can you use an existing lead in another area?
Yes.
I mean, I'm just beating this up a little, I'm not trying to be critical, but I'm just...
We're looking at that, and also, we're looking at, hey, if it's downtime, let's go and wax floors, let's, let's go and buff these floors. So, that's another part, and something where we bring somebody in and get that done, so we won't have to do that, so that, we're kinda getting rid of that time track.
So, just to be clear, so, what, where are we talking? We're talking like prosecutor's office?
All of the annex and the safety side. And I'm looking at taking two other areas.
Okay. So, so the contracts were roughly about seventy thousand a year, that's what they were running you, and this is gonna be basically about another ninety thousand dollars on top of that?
I got sixty, but, yeah, okay.
Oh, or, or, no, just to be clear, you said one sixty?
Yes.
Hundred and sixty thousand dollars for three people?
Yeah.
Is that what we're doing?
But you're unplugging two contractors, so...
I'm just trying to do the math here, two contracts at seventy grand, hundred and forty versus a hundred and sixty, so we're talking a delta of twenty? Yeah.
Is that what we're talking about? Okay. So, the increase is about twenty?
Twenty grand, okay.
And we'll get superior service, and we have the confidence of better security, and probably could even get a little bit more leverage out of them.
Yes.
If they're really good, they'll, they'll get a lot more done, so possibly, we can actually do other things.
Do other things, yeah.
We'll get twenty dollars, or twenty thousand worth of extra value, hopefully.
And I'm also looking at, it helps out a whole lot, we did this at the courthouse, right? We work our team, the two that we have right now, between twelve o'clock and eight-thirty.
Well, it's getting tougher and tougher. If you find people who can pass the drug test or willing to work, work at the rates that we're paying them, well, that's good to be a county, I'm not blaming them.
And I just can't put our other elected officials at risk like that.
Five oh, no.
Okay.
You're good? All together?
Yep.
The maintenance department is requesting the board approve the revised title and job description for the position of maintenance helper to become custodian one number nineteen oh six to be effective February twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen. The maintenance department is requesting the board approve the creation title and job description for the position of lead custodian number nineteen sixteen to be effective February twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen. The maintenance department is requesting the board approve the revised organizational chart to improve the revised title of custodian one number nineteen oh six and the position of lead custodian number nineteen sixteen to be effective February twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen. The maintenance department is requesting the board approve the reclassification of doors modeling and life pack from the current positions of maintenance helper two custodian one number nineteen oh six to be effective February twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen. The maintenance department is requesting the board approve the reclassification of doors modeling and life pack from the current positions of maintenance helper two custodian one number nineteen oh six to be effective February twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen. The maintenance department is requesting the board approve the creation title and job description for the position of lead custodian number nineteen sixteen to be effective February twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen. The maintenance department is requesting the board approve the revised organizational chart to improve the revised title of custodian one number nineteen oh six and the position of lead custodian number nineteen sixteen to be effective February twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen. The maintenance department is requesting the board approve the reclassification of doors modeling and life pack from the current positions of maintenance helper two custodian one number nineteen oh six to be effective February twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen. The maintenance department is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for the position of lead custodian number nineteen sixteen, this position remains closed to themselves. The maintenance department is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for two positions of custodian one number nineteen oh six, these positions remain closed to themselves.
Before I make the motion, is it possible to do a bench check, you know, get a year under our balance, see how this is working versus the contract, and so maybe revisit it, just to make sure we're tracking everything, everything we're expecting is actually playing out? Can we do that?
Yeah, I think we can.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to suggest that, so we'll come back and revisit this, and remind us if we forget what all the stuff we got going on, so.
Second?
Mr. Claypool?
Yes.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Well, Glenn was here. He had sent a request to send a couple of his people to training in Texas, was it Texas? For the safety center technology, locks and doors and all that stuff. It's about seven thousand dollars to do that. Right now, that would come out, we pay that out of his travel budget, but you're looking for extra money put into travel budget, but you usually don't spend that much of travel for maintenance department. Do you gentlemen have any thoughts about that?
This is, with our ICE, this is one of the things that we got nailed on, I guess, none of our guys are certified to work on the doors. They've been working on them for the last twelve years, but according to the, these guys, you need to go through this class and have a certification in, in working on jail door doors. Lieutenant Rose, she was great at trying to find a place to send these guys, this was the closest place, this is the actual hardware that these guys work on, on these doors, so.
What's so special about the doors, they need a certification?
It's the sliders, these are just not irregular doors, these are, you know, they slide open, they got the buttons, you know, cell doors, and once you start doing the mechanical on the inside, it can be very difficult. So, Alan Moore has really picked it up, and he's been training the other guys really on this stuff, so.
Who certifies jail door maintenance people?
These are just.
Is this a state agency or what?
It's part of the ICE checklist.
The ICE checklist, yeah.
They had to do a lot of things to comply with their requirements or to receive.
I find that just fascinating.
I mean, can we, I don't know, I have part-time proof in this, seven grand to do that? I mean, I can't.
How many, how many guys is it?
We're sending two.
Two? For how long?
It's a week long.
But it's, it's, it's more than seven grand, because then we gotta pay for their stay.
No, 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 that's, that's everything.
Does that include their salaries?
Yes. Oh, oh, well, no, not their salary.
Right.
But that includes the hotel that you can get in there and everything, and the per diem and everything.
I mean, the thing, what I, what I would say is, is that we should maybe have the sheriff find out if there's a way that he could call ICE, since we're housing their prisoners at a good rate, you know, that they kick in on this, you know?
I'd go along with that. I mean, I'm, I'm sitting here questioning in my mind, I'm, I'm struggling with.
And he's been fixing them for the last twelve years, and we haven't had any issues, and now all of a sudden, so he can get a piece of paper?
If he's been doing it twelve years, can't we just have him sign off on a certification? Clearly, he must know what he's doing.
Right.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think, I think at least, you know, we, we need to see the write-up from ICE. What is it, what do they think is lacking, and why is this really necessary?
I don't think we're giving, you know, we're not trying to give you a hard time, but that's a lot of money. Did they request you to do this? I mean, did the sheriff's department come to you and request you to send that?
Yeah, they came back and said, listen, this is one of the things we got nailed on. Lieutenant Rose down there.
Right, right. I know that, I know there's very strict, you know, parameters and requirements to be an ICE detainee facility, and, you know, and you gotta, it's very complicated, and you gotta meet all those requirements, but again, this is, you know, this isn't something that we just started doing yesterday, you know, so I, I guess I would just need to hear a little more explanation as to why, for this expense, I, you know, just a little more clarity, I guess.
We can only send one guy, so, and, you know, I went with the two guys, so we have the backup, because I'm also looking at if somebody retires or something like that, we still have the other person that's certified, so.
And I just still struggle, this whole certification to put a door on, it's a door. Well, you can see it's sliders, because it's some electronics, I, I don't know, I don't, I struggle with it, so.
So, the manufacturing? Manufacturing the doors is in Texas? Okay, do they ever come here? Would it be cheaper to have someone come here and train their guys?
Yeah, we can look into that, but.
Well, because then you can train everybody, not just the two guys that are going to Texas.
Yeah, right, it might be cheaper to fly them in here and do a thing here. And then we could maybe sponsor the class, and it would, and we'll put, put something out, and it would, and we could, we could charge, you know. We'll get everyone trained up on the doors. Small rate, and then everybody could get trained, you know, from the area.
You can't just go online and take a test? I mean, what is the certification?
You're getting hands-on and everything.
If Kathy could give us some, some backup, and you could give us some backup on the manufacturer, what the options might be.
When is it this summer?
Yes.
Yeah. When do you need to know by?
Yesterday.
Oh, really? That's good to know, yeah.
We'll, we'll make it work, so.
Get in it and look at some other things.
Explore some options and come back.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Our rubber stamps are from school.
Okay, so, Laura, do you want to come up and talk about this one here? Thank you for coming in.
Good morning. Do you want to sit up here or? Um, I don't know. This is. Yeah, why don't you come on up?
I'm a little higher up here, you know.
You want to?
Yeah, sure. How you doing?
How are you?
Tim Leonard.
Sheila Salem.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Christine was talking to me the other day about the fact that you guys received a letter from Caterina Coco Fulton. Apparently, there's a, there's an attachment to that as well, it's a copy of the maintenance inspection agreement, and apparently, apparently, it's only been signed by her client, and apparently, you also received a copy of a letter from Sheila Salem from our office, who is the legal representative for Solon Water, indicating that there are, I believe, two items that the property owner failed to address. Apparently, she, Ms. Salem indicated that she wanted, let's see what it is, that the agreement failed to include the provision that the owner will not eliminate or make structural changes or modifications to the facility without the prior written approval from the district, and she also indicated that they would like the, sorry, I'm getting a little cold. They would like the as-built drawing attached to the agreement in order to make the agreement, and specifically, the long-term maintenance provision more clear, and apparently, Solon Water needs these two items in the agreement, and they do, they do not appear in the version that was sent to you. So, on that basis, apparently, Ms. Salem feels that the, the agreement is not complete, and for all intents and purposes, the condition that was in the board's motion, I believe, January eighteenth, has not been met, that the agreement be complete.
Okay, so.
So, we're, we're just talking two documents not attached, and that's the, what it takes to complete this? I mean, not that.
Yes. Yeah, not even two documents not attached, just one provision being put in the agreement, and then another one just attached, which is already in part of her file anyways.
And what's Ms. Coke's response to?
She said she doesn't have an objection to the actual provisions, but she doesn't want to go back to her client. I, I don't know, I don't, I don't know.
Okay, so, I mean, either she wants to comply or she doesn't.
Right. Well, she, she did, I will say that she did tell me in discussions that she has a ideological objection to the whole agreement, but I said, well, I understand that, but you only got a variance from the one provision. From the beginning, I said, I'm happy to give you our agreement and just take out the provision that says you have to file it with your deed, because that's what you got a variance on, and she refused that, and said she wants to make her own. So, that's fine, as long as it has everything, I don't care if you drafted or redrafted, as long as it has everything we need. And then, this going back and forth, she just, at the end, said, you know, I'm not gonna go back to her, I'm not gonna watch my clients.
So, just to be clear, there, there was certain things that she had not agreed to in there, they picked out a couple at the.
That she, so she took our model and, and made her own agreement, but took out some provisions.
Okay, okay.
So, obviously, the recording with the deed, I was fine with, because that's what the variance covers.
Right.
But the other two, we weren't fine with, because that's part of, and it's in the regulations, and you guys had said they had, and she had an objection, she said, well, you know, the as-built is part of our file anyways, and I said, well, yeah, so why do you object? It's part of the file anyways, I don't want to go back to my clients, that's just what she kept. So, at some point, she just cut off, I couldn't, I mean, we can't negotiate anymore, because she just wouldn't, and so she had her client sign the agreement and send it, but we can't sign it, because we don't agree to it.
Right, right.
And, and we're kind of stuck, because we have our regs that say what has to be.
It didn't include all the regulations.
Right, exactly, right.
Okay, okay. Okay, so what's the next step? I mean, is it?
It sounds to me like the, the agreement that we came to or the motion we passed is void.
Well, I, I guess for, for the most part, if the condition wasn't met, then I would agree.
I mean, if, if it looked like there was some intent or some effort on her part, I mean, to, you know, then I might argue for her, to give her a little bit of pass, but if there's no cooperative attitude, you know, it is what it is, we tried really hard, as you know, I mean, we put a lot of time into this, to consider a variance, and, but the conditions had to be met, so, at least from my perspective, I don't know the two, you feel, but.
So, we're just trying to get, I mean, for, I'm just trying to help the board get some closure on this issue, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, so, two Tins questions, so, the conditions weren't met, so now, apparently, a letter to her indicating that she has to comply, and is that the next step?
Will that go to the prosecutor's office then?
Would there be, there would be further enforcement action?
Right, so what would happen is the variance would be void, so you would make a motion to that effect now or whatever, and then we would just start our same compliance action that we were doing before, so we'll send a letter saying you need to comply with us now, and.
Okay.
I believe Christine was working on some language, for some proposed language, the